Welcome everyone to our November 27th Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk, if you can open the meeting, we have a nice agenda.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Ms. [inaudible]. Councilwoman Castellino.
Present.
Councilman Cirillo.
Present.
Councilman Guerino.
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac.
Present.
Council President McCartney.
Present.
Mayor Parisi.
Present.
Councilwoman-elect Matute Brown.
So, welcome everyone. When I say we have a nice agenda, this evening we have the West Orange Fire Department here today in full force for an awards ceremony. Chief?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to welcome our honorees, friends and family of our honorees, and members of the community. We'd like to use this forum because we do get an opportunity to recognize our personnel in front of you folks who are the community we serve. So, thank you to Council President and to the members of the council for welcoming us here tonight. I'd also like the opportunity to thank Mickey Wagner, who is not here with us because she's back at the firehouse getting ready for our little reception afterwards, but Mickey helps us put all this together and puts the awards together, and without her, I don't know where we'd be. So, also, thank you to Captain Joe Mutullo, who is our Awards Committee Chairman, who puts together every year when the awards are submitted, they get evaluated, and thanks to Captain Mutullo for his work. The West Orange Fire Department does about seventy, close to 7,500 runs a year, and every year we take submissions from only a handful where we give out awards. This night, we're going to be giving out for four incidents, several members of our department, because we function as a team, and that's how we roll. So, you'll hear a lot of names be called, but... So, what I'd like to do is read actually for each of the calls that we're recognizing tonight, read the excerpt from our company reports, which will kind of give you an idea as to what was involved in this particular call. The first incident that we're going to recognize occurred on Thursday, January 18th. Some of you might be familiar with this incident because we also recognized these gentlemen in the spring at another awards ceremony. Engine 4 was dispatched and responded to 14 Phyllis Road for a juvenile person who had shocked himself. Engine 4 established command on arrival and were met outside by the patient's younger brother. He told the crew that his brother was out back and his mom was helping him breathe. The Engine 4 crew made their way to the back deck and found the patient lying unresponsive. His mother recalled that he was attempting to show her a form of art where he burns wood using electricity. It's called fractal wood burning. She said he apparently shocked himself and screamed loudly before going unresponsive. She immediately called 911 and said he appeared to be breathing for several minutes. Just prior to arrival, though, his breathing stopped, and she tried to assist him with his breaths. Engine 4 de-energized the improvised burning device and immediately moved the patient inside to a dry and wet, dry and well-lit location to conduct patient assessment and begin CPR. The patient had no pulse and only agonal respirations. Engine 4 began chest compressions and supplemental breathing using a bag-valve mask while the AED was prepared. The pads were placed on the unit and powered on. It immediately delivered a shock and CPR was continued while following the commands provided by the device. Engine 4 updated dispatch to inform them that an active CPR due to electrocution and requested that they expedite paramedic response. A second shock was delivered, and Engine 4 crew again continued CPR while also obtaining patient information and medical history from the mother. Rescue 2 arrived and assisted with CPR. Medic 254 arrived moments later and assumed patient care. CPR was continued while three more shocks were delivered, and the patient was prepared for transport. Engine 4 personnel assisted Rescue 2 in transporting the patient to St. Barnabas Medical Center for evaluation and treatment. This patient was 17 years old, and he is graduated last year, and he's actually out in Michigan serving as an electrical apprentice. So, we tried to get him to be with us tonight, and he couldn't be, but I'd like to call up Captain George Hess, firefighter Matthew Keenan, firefighter Nicholas Manzella, firefighter Patrick McGovern, and firefighter Craig Vanderhoof, whoever is with us today. This is firefighter Matthew Keenan. Unfortunately, he's the only one that's with us tonight. That's it. We'll get pictures afterwards. We'll get pictures afterwards. You've got to keep it moving. The second call that we're honoring tonight occurred on Wednesday, June 13th of this year, 750 Northfield Avenue. Rescue 2 was dispatched to 750 Northfield Avenue, Apartment 206, for chest pains. Rescue 2 arrived on scene with Medic 254, established command, and investigated the medical emergency. Patient was seated in her bathroom complaining of chest pains. Rescue 2 and Medic 254 assessed the patient and took vitals. Patient was alert and oriented times three. Patient initially did not want to go to the hospital, but was convinced she needed to go. Patient was packaged and was still alert. Once the patient was brought to the hallway, she became unresponsive. She had no pulse and was not breathing. CPR was started. Medics placed AED on patient, and Rescue 2 crew started rescue breathing. Dispatch was notified that CPR was in progress. Patient was transported down the elevator, Rescue 2, while continuing CPR. Rescue 2 requested additional resources to the scene. Engine 3 was dispatched and arrived on the scene. Engine 3, Medic 254, and Rescue 2 continued CPR on scene until the medics were ready for transport. Rescue 2 and Medic 254 transported to St. Barnabas with the assistance of Engine 3. Patient regained a pulse on arrival to the hospital. Rescue 2 transferred patient care to the emergency department at St. Barnabas, terminated command, and returned to service. So, for this, I would like to call up Fire Captain John Gibson, Fire Captain Abdur Yaseen, firefighter Daniel Carrion, firefighter Ryan Tuttiglione, and firefighter James Turco. The next incident, I think I'm going to have the, I'm going to ask the members to come up, Fire Captain Rich Smith, firefighter Joseph Di Pasquale, firefighter Jason Fregans, firefighter Jonathan Jenkins, and firefighter Kevin Skocandish, if they can come up. This incident occurred on Thursday, June 28th of this year, 61 Bolin Drive. Rescue 3 and Engine 3 were dispatched and responded to 61 Bolin Drive for an unresponsive patient. Rescue 3 arrived on scene and established command. Patient was found in her bedroom, unresponsive, but breathing. Rescue 3 did a rapid assessment and vitals on the patient. Rescue 3 and Engine 4 moved the patient onto the stretcher. Medic 7 arrived on scene and assumed patient care. Shortly thereafter, the patient stopped breathing, and Rescue 3, Engine 4, and Medic 7 began CPR. Following several cycles of compressions and ventilation, units got a pulse back on the patient. Rescue 3 transported to St. Barnabas Medical Center with medics onboard. Patient care was transferred, command was terminated, and they returned to service. So, once again, Fire Captain Rich Smith, firefighter Joseph Di Pasquale, firefighter Jason Fregans, firefighter Jonathan Jenkins, and probation, well, he's a firefighter now, For this next award, we're going to be giving out one commendation and a whole slew of unit citations. This was for an event that happened on Tuesday, July 10th, at 27 Overlook Avenue. Engine 3 arrived on, you know what, let's call everybody up again. Let's do that again. Let's have firefighter Philip Johnson, Fire Captain Michael Connolly, Fire Captain Thomas Hayes, Fire Captain Douglas Johnson, firefighter Christopher Benderoth, firefighter Kevin Dean, firefighter Joseph Di Pasquale, firefighter William Kelly, firefighter Frank Nobarini, firefighter Michael Riley, and firefighter Kevin Skocandish. All come on up. Engine 3 arrived on scene and established 27 Overlook Avenue command. Engine 3 found a climber from Friendly Tree Service approximately 30 feet off the ground with injuries to his left side and unable to extricate himself from a tree. Engine 3 advised incoming units of the situation. Engine 3 then placed a 24-foot ladder off the deck of 25 Overlook Avenue to establish patient contact. Firefighter Phil Johnson ascended the ladder and found the victim entangled in rope with a possible broken left arm and injured left leg. Firefighter Johnson secured himself and the patient to the ladder and extricated the patient from the ropes. With assistance from the other companies, firefighter Johnson then guided the patient down the ladder and turned over patient care to Rescue 3 and Medic 254 for evaluation and transport to the trauma center at University Hospital. All companies gathered equipment, command was terminated, and all companies returned to service. So, the first is a commendation for firefighter Philip Johnson. We have that. Who, accepting on behalf of firefighter Philip Johnson, will be his brother, Fire Captain Douglas Johnson. So, we also have, so the unit citations go to Fire Captain Michael Connolly, Fire Captain Thomas Hayes, Fire Captain Douglas Johnson, firefighter Christopher Benderoth, firefighter Kevin Dean, firefighter Joseph Di Pasquale, firefighter William Kelly, firefighter Frank Nobarini, firefighter Michael Riley, and firefighter Kevin Skocandish. All right. Thanks, guys. Thank you, council. We appreciate you having us here to do our little presentation. Congratulations, gentlemen. If I can just get maybe two minutes so we can get a picture with you guys, would be okay with that? So, all the recipients, if you can come on back up so we can just get a picture up One last thing, we are having a little reception back at Fire Headquarters, so if anyone wants to stop by for some eats, you guys may be here too long, so I don't know what time we're wrapping it up, but feel free to call. You're all welcome to come. Have some. Thank you again.
So, I told you that was a nice ceremony, outstanding service, saving lives while putting their own on the line. Congratulations to our fire department. So, believe it or not, we have this girls' soccer team up next, and they are dressed so beautifully that if you saw the pictures, or if you've ever seen a game, and some of the plays, and some of the moves, that it just looks like two different things. So, I'm going to ask my colleague, Michelle Castellino, to present the, to the West Orange High School girls' soccer team.
Good evening, lady mountaineers. So, great to have you come down. Very excited to have you here. Last spring, I believe it was, we had the girls, ladies, the girls' basketball team in for their accomplishments. So, this is a year of girl athletics, women's athletics at West Orange High School. You should be very proud of yourselves, your accomplishment on such a banner year. And being a student and a student athlete, particularly with the dedication, your commitment, your studies alone, just keeping up, keeping at it ASAP, and up with your grades, and getting ready for those of you who are seniors this year, doing your college applications in the fall, a very demanding schedule, so we wanted you to come down tonight to celebrate all of your hard work and all of your efforts. You should be very excited and proud of yourselves and for this recognition, because you worked really hard for it. I'd like to call up your coaches. Head coach Sean DeVore, and assistant coaches Chris Maylet, Sebastian De Pinto, Dave Perez, and Joe Torres. Coaches, please come up. So glad to have you today. How you doing, Coach? Congratulations. Good seniors. So, I just want to talk about your coaches for a little bit. I remember when Coach DeVore came on to West Orange High School and took over the program, and at the time, I was, my other job on the school board, and it was just so exciting to see him come on and take over and move the program forward. And I know it's been an effort working, always keeping up with our mountaintop, and working with your student athletes, and all of your coaches keeping up with our ASAP program up at the high school, and monitoring everyone's grades, because academics are very important as long as with athletics, and that's a big feat, and you should be congratulated of all your hard work, and thank you for all your dedication, all of you, to our high school. And I'd be remiss in saying, if I didn't congratulate Coach Perez, who I've known forever, on becoming a new dad in the past couple of weeks, so congratulations, Coach Perez. Now, let's see what happened this banner year. So, the West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize the West Orange High School girls' soccer team. The West Orange girls' soccer team had their best season ever in school history. The team finished with 19 wins, one loss, and two ties. West Orange had the longest unbeaten streak in New Jersey in a total of 39 games dating back to 2016. The girls won the SEC American Division Championship and the program's first-ever Essex County Championship, defeating Glenridge 2-1 overtime. Congratulations, girls. Nice job. They went on to defeat Livingston 1-0 to capture the program's first-ever NJSAA North One Group Four State Sectional Championship. Another nice feat. Congratulations. I think, Mr. Fly, I think we get up on the banner this year with these accomplishments. Nice, nice job. And I also want to thank the parents as well, before I finish off on this, for your hard work and dedication, and ladies, you'd like to give your parents a big round of applause for all of their efforts. Especially with all that traveling that you do, parents, so thank you for being so dedicated to the team. You know, this is another record set by this team. The team is currently, I think you had your highest ranking at number three this year, and you finished up number four in New Jersey and number 20 in the nation, so congratulations on that as well. My colleagues, the West Orange Township Council, and myself are proud to recognize and congratulate the team on their excellent sportsmanship and achievements, and wishes them continued success in the future. Congratulations, ladies. Nice job. Coaches, what I'm going to ask you to do is, if we could call up, you could say a few words, if you like, about the team, and we have the awards for them, and I'd like to call them individually up, and then ladies, when you come up, you just come right up, right behind us, up here on the podium. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. And thank you for having us. I know the girls just did such a great job, and it was, we talked to the girls about moments, and some of these moments are going to live with the kids forever, and, you know, I know they did their parents proud, they did the school community proud, and, you know, just having people come up to us and say, "Guys, great job. Keep going, keep it going," and the girls just kept answering the bell every single time. I think it was one of the best runs, and just to put it in perspective, five years ago, before Coach Mount and I came in, the program didn't even qualify for the state tournament for three years, and to come five years later and not only qualify for the tournament, but to win it, is a great achievement, and it just goes to all the hard work from the kids and all the things that the school committee did for us. So, thank you very much to the kids, and to the parents, and to the community for recognizing us. They just did a phenomenal job, and we'd like to call the girls up one by one. Start with two of our captains. Naya Harper, who was a senior captain for us. Another senior captain, Caitlin Charles. And again, guys, thank you for everything from the kids, coaches, thank you for everything you've done, parents, thank you for everything, and it was just a great year, something the kids will remember forever, and before you know it, we'll be back at it in June, so a couple of months to enjoy, and back to work. Thank you very much for having us, guys. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Have a good year, ladies.
Thank you so much. I hope to see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having the kids. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was all good news, and Jack, I guess next on our agenda is our redevelopment update, and I believe that that's even more good news.
Actually, we're doing very well. There's about 80 units rented out in the Battery Building. The, I still can't, they still won't tell me about the commercial properties yet, but there are some people that are looking at their commercial properties, and it seems to be moving along pretty well.
They had an open house on Sunday.
What's that?
They have open houses on Sundays.
Yes, on Sundays, there's open houses for anyone who wants to look at the units and everything else. So, it's working out pretty, it's working out very well.
Any questions?
Nothing.
Great.
Workmanship unbelievable.
I see them.
I have one. Are they going to reschedule our visit? I think we got canceled with the weather.
You know what? I didn't ask them that. I'll find out, though. I will find out.
Yeah, that, yeah, because that would have been nice. Good.
Council liaison announcements, Jerry? I know we have Big Saturday coming up, so I know you're anxious to talk about Saturdays.
I'm anxious, Council President.
One to Wonderland.
Thank you, Council President. First news, I want to do a big shout-out for shop small business. Shop small businesses past Saturday was very successful for our merchants throughout the township, not just the downtown corridor. The ones that we've been in contact with said they found additional traffic, people have never shopped within the downtown corridor or any other store in the township, and they were very surprised to see the variety of types of products and services and things they can buy right within the township. So, our merchants were very, very happy, and we'll be rolling it out more, even more so next year, and it'll be more TV advertisement from American Express. Rolling right along to Saturday will be our holiday open weekend, and of course, and I won't take away from Councilwoman Castellino, but just note that from 9:00, at 9:00 o'clock at Washington Middle School, will be Breakfast with Santa. I don't know why we keep so thin with all these breakfasts as he goes there. I don't know how. But you can register online for Breakfast at Santa at www.downtownwo.com, so you can register for, you know, pay for it online, and I'll let Councilwoman Castellino talk them all about Breakfast with Santa. Also, we have during, from, we'll be having the West Orange Community House Holiday Show. Will be crafts. Right now, there's about 20 craft vendors that will be there, and you'll be able to see the new Community House Gymnasium. Kudos to Paul Sito and the Board of Directors Community House, which I sit on, for the new gym. You should take a look. If you don't want to come and buy anything, come on down and see the new Community House gym. It's open to the public, and it's a very, very fine facility. Also, during the day, there'll be the annual trolley tours, Mayor Parisi and town officials, so you'll be able to come on down, and the last tour will be starting at 3:30 PM. It takes you down and up the Main Street Corridor, takes you through the Welland Park, where you get to tour some of the fantastic sites and historic places within the Welland Park, including Glenmont, as you drive by, so you should come out and see, it's a nice way to spend a half an hour ride and learn more about the corridor and the Welland Park. And of course, there'll be Pictures with Santa throughout the day. Go to the downtown website, www.downtownwo.com. It'll give you a whole layout of where Santa's going to be throughout the day with free Pictures with Santa. Also, a big shout-out to, at the library, for the Stuffed Animal Workshop and Storytime from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. Registration and reservations are required, so you can reach the public library at www.wopl.org, or call them at 973-736-10198. So, it's a really, really filled weekend in the downtown corridor, and plus, right after all that ends, we are going to have our fantastic Christmas tree lighting down here at Town Hall, and the arrival of Santa Claus. So, please plan your days, a whole thing down here throughout the township, down the corridor, and here at Town Hall, and we look forward to our residents and neighbors coming and joining and starting off the holiday with us, and as the mayor lights the tree too, so we're looking forward to seeing our mayor, too. Leaving that, going on to other things, tomorrow night, you probably won't miss anybody here, is our monthly West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting, 7:30 at the Essex County Educational Center located at Turtleback Zoo, and again, our thanks to the county and the county executive and freeholders. And again, our thanks to the county and the county executive and freeholders for the use of this fantastic facility. So we're looking to have more people, every meeting, more and more people are coming to put their input and getting ideas of how we're making West Orange more pedestrian safety and vehicular safety. And since I've talked so much and everything else, I think that's enough for now, Council President. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman?
None for me. Thank you.
Okay. On this side? Victor, any announcements?
I'll go last after.
Okay. Sure. Councilwoman?
Sure. So just to follow up with Breakfast with Santa, nine o'clock, Washington Elementary School, adults are $10 per person and $7 for children. It's a picture-taking opportunity, so Santa will be there, and he will be taking pictures with the children. And we had about 150 guests last year, so we're excited about it. The kids had a lot of fun. Santa was very cheery and ready for the rest of his day. So it's a good, good time ahead by all. And speaking of Santa, I really want to thank the West Orange Recreation Department and our police and fire departments for Monday, this past Sunday, where Santa toured throughout the township. And this year, he did a little bit different. He stopped at all our elementary schools in the different neighborhoods, and a schedule was posted. And just to see the kids' faces light up in the way they did was really amazing. So, and it was a beautiful day. It couldn't have been any, any more perfect. So I like to shout out to Santa himself, because, you know, he's very busy this time of year, and, you know, spent the entire day this past Sunday with, to bring some cheer to her, to the children of West Orange, and he'll be back at it again on Saturday. So thank you to him and all our police and firefighters who was out supporting the event. We have the township menorah lighting Monday night, this Monday night, December 3rd at 4:00 PM, right in front on, in front on Town Hall. So please come down if you're available to celebrate with us Hanukkah. And I just wanted to touch base a little bit. I know, I know there was a lot of craziness. I'm glad the mayor's here tonight, because I want to thank him, because he always takes everything on the chin and is really out there with, with responding to the community. You know, two weeks ago, we had a tough snowstorm here in the township, and our first rescuers, our fire, our police, I myself was stuck from Livingston, coming home for six hours in the car, trying to, you know, just get home safely like everyone else. And, you know, I witnessed one of the eight car fires we had in the township. So it was crazy times, but everybody stepped up to the plate, especially our teachers in the community for staying with their children, and our, and it's not just the teachers, but administration and staff members, so, and neighbors helping neighbors and businesses coming out to help each other. So it showed once again, we are the nicest town in the state, which made me very happy to see in a rough time. So it was nice to see that something that was, you know, so, you know, traumatic to a lot of people, really, you know, everybody pitched in and worked in together. And unfortunately, things happen that we can't control with, with Mother Nature, but it's nice to see how our community comes together in these tough times. So, Council President.
Very nice, very nice. Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to mention, and the councilwoman reminded me, that we should announce the Hispanic Foundation Toy Drive. So the details, she asked me for the details. I didn't have them handy, that's why I was writing them down. So anyhow, so it's the Third Annual Toy Drive, December, by, on December 7th, the West Orange Hispanic Foundation will be accepting donations, unwrapped gifts, any age, boys and girls, to be eventually given out on December 15th at an event at 2:00. So again, the, we're soliciting toys to be donated and given out for the holidays up to December 7th at the Holy Trinity Church. You can also contact, you can contact me or one of us if we can pick up any donations. And I know the, the mayor has an event as well. The Sunshine Fund is having an event, and there are toys that are also solicited and donated at that event. So we're trying to make the holidays joyful for everybody. So it's, it's going to be exciting, and the community's invited December 15th to the event at 2:00 at the church. Lastly, I do want to make mention again, and I mentioned it at the, two council meetings ago, Ken Mandel. That was a beautiful event, a nice fundraiser at the Art Council Building. So thank you for everybody that attended. It was a beautiful fundraiser. Funds were, a lot of folks attended and were able to collect a significant amount of funds. And most importantly, Ken Mandel's Oscar, right? He had one of those, yeah. It was beautiful to see and take a picture. So we have so many accomplished individuals in town, and Ken Mandel happens to be a very special person to, for a lot, a lot of us, and accomplished. So I'm glad to see him recognized, and I wanted to make mention of that, Council President. And lastly, the Degnan House meeting was canceled this November. We're going to be holding it in December. So that's December 27th. So we'll, we'll report back then. All right? Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Speaking of the West Orange Arts Council, I invite everyone to visit woac.org to see about their holiday boutique and more events and exhibitions and displays that they have, that they have planned. The planning board will meet next Wednesday at 7:30 here in Council Chambers on December 5th. And I received an email from Ryan Del Gershio, who is the Supervisor of Technology and Engineering at the West Orange High School, and the Mountaineer Auto Club, West invite, they're having a fundraiser. This is interesting, because they're doing oil changes, vehicle winterizations, check your fluid, check the battery, antifreeze check, tire rotations for all West Orange residents. They're requesting a donation of $20. Seniors will be free. The event will be December 8th from 8:00 to 2:00 PM. To make an appointment, call the high school, 669-5301. Extension is 31529. You can go to West Orange High School for more information. So everyone's invited, and all work is supervised by Rudy Petrella, ASE-certified automotive, automotive technology teacher. Everyone's invited to, how timely. And thank you, Councilwoman, for mentioning about the storm. West Orange was hit hard with the state closing 280 and traffic being diverted all through town. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public-
Excuse me, one minute.
Sure.
Cindy, didn't comment any?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed into Township Clerk's office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Garino?
Present.
Councilman Kokovia?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Mayor Parisi?
Present.
Councilwoman Electa Toot Brown?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On behalf of my colleagues, we hope everyone enjoyed a beautiful Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving weekend with your family and friends. Black Friday, Shop Local Saturday, Cyber Sunday, Cyber Monday, and here we are up to Tuesday.
Cyber Tuesday.
Cyber Tuesday. Everything's extended. Giving Tuesday, right. Everything's extended. First on our agenda is public comment. I'm sorry. Do you want to talk about the resolution first? I think we should have public comment, and then we'll be able to talk about it. Okay? Yes, March. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam President, council members. March Mingen, 30 Davie Drive, West Orange, and I'm here tonight representing the Library Board of Trustees. I want to thank all of you wonderful people who serve this community. I was up in Burlington, Vermont, with a minus nine degrees for 10 days, constant snow. But, so, once I hit the 280, even though it gets congested, it's very welcome. And I know how much effort you put into the jobs that you do, and I know the community appreciates it, and we do have a wonderful community. So seeing the awards given to our men in blue, our fire department, that's very warming for the community to know that we have such generous and competent people if anything happens to us. So thank you again for everything. I just want to make a mention at, although I wasn't here, I understand that the library was open for people who were stranded, and they stayed through the night. So there was help all around. It was greatly appreciated. So just let me highlight a few of the events that, as we open up the holiday season. I think, Jerry, you had mentioned that December 1st on Saturday, Winter Wonderland is being sponsored by the library. Stuffed Animal Workshop for kids, so, but they, please register or call the library at 973-736-0198, extension 216. On Monday, December, December 3rd, we have our own Scott Kelly's Endurance Book that the book club is sponsoring. And if you haven't read the book, I think you really should. It's wonderful. It's enlightening. I don't think I want to go to the moon, but it's so apropos, because our Mars Insight just landed on the planet, the red planet, and it took them six, it took it six months to get there, and 300 million miles. So I think, you know, with NASA now more in control with our space agency and our development within our own, you know, country, not Russia, I think it's great that we're back in the game. But, so, if you haven't read the book, I suggest that you do read it, and if you have read it, please join the book club at the library. On Monday, December 10th at 7:00 PM, The Nutcracker is being performed by Sylvian Wins. So treat yourself to those you love, to the seasonal favorite, performed by world-class musicians that have performed at Carnegie Hall and Leakin Center, and meet the characters of the ETA Hoffman's Original Story of the Nutcracker, as our actor dramatizes the tale to the sounds of Tchaikovsky's Nutcracker Suite, and played by a woodwind quintet. So that's on Monday, December 10th at 7:00 PM. It's very worthwhile. On December 15th, we have Sew It at the library, and that's for our tweens and teens, from 1:30 to 3:30. And the students will be making their own holiday gifts, and those are treasured. I know, I still have a necklace that my son made out of paper clips and contact paper that I wear all the time. And every time I go, they say, "Whoa, where did you get that? From what boutique?" And I said, "Well, my son was three and a half years old when he made it." On December 16th, at 2:00 to 3:00 PM, The Frost Kings will be entertaining at the library, and that's a mixture of jazz and swing, and that will be with holiday music that I think is very enjoyable. And on Thursday, December 27th at 4:00 PM, The Crabgrass Puppet Theater presents The Pirate, The Princess, and The Pea, and all ages are welcome. So that should be a nice, interesting event. And finally, we have an art opening here, Works in Textile, Beguiling Richnesses of Everything, Including Grammar Sounds and Emotions. And that's going on at the library the whole month of December. So thank you very much, and I wish you a wonderful holiday season. And again, thank you for everything you do for this community. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, March.
Thank you, March.
Yes. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. Pat Segalas, Degnan House, 430 Main Street, West Orange. I trust everyone had a very nice Thanksgiving. It's a time that some of us take for granted. Some of us share a tradition at the dinner table that we share what we are most grateful This year, I was totally prepared, and yet somehow, we didn't have it at our house. I had wanted to share what I thought was the most, I was most grateful for, and that is the First Amendment of the Constitution. It was especially significant to me this year, especially the line where it states, and I quote, "The people shall not be deprived or abridged of their rights to speak, to write, or publish their sentiments." On October 30th, this right was denied to me. I had not gotten through what I had to say, express my sentiments, before being asked to step down. In my opinion, I was trying to make a comparison of Councilman Cirillo's directorship in Newark and that at the Degnan House. It was not in my mind or intent in any way to humiliate him. I had been frustrated have, having written Councilman Cirillo for a small intervention on behalf of the residents at Degnan House to help in relocating our voting poll from Edison Middle School to next door to us at the Elks. I only requested he look into it for us. I never made a request for transportation, yet everyone is making that the focal point of this situation. Then after having read an article in the West Orange Chronicle about how much he enjoys being with his people in Newark and connecting with them, it upset me, because in my opinion, we were not important to him at all. Then, my next question, was expecting a response to my email too much to expect? Apparently, in my opinion, it was. There was no response, nothing. Had it even sent a simple response such as, "Sorry, Mrs. Segalas, not too much I can do," or, "Mrs. Segalas, I'll look into it and get back to you," would have sufficed, even if there has been no attempt to call me back or get back to me. Had a simple answer to my correspondence, in my point of view, most, if not all, of this would not have happened. One of the problems cited in the senior survey, which was major, was lack of communication. And this incident, incident is such a prime example. A sample, a simple response would be all that it took. That's it. That's all. As for advocating for senior citizens in West Orange or Essex County for this, for that matter, I will continue to make it one of my priorities. Communication is always key. However, freedom of speech is more so, and that is why our forefathers made it number one, the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America. Thank you. Anyone else?
You have a lot of events going on for the holidays, and so does the county. Of course, that Turtleback Zoo is the holiday light spectacular, which began about two weeks ago, can, beginning, well, it's this weekend, and then beginning December 7th, it's every night from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. All that we ask, it's free admission, but all we ask is that visitors bring non-perishable food, used winter coats, and new toys. A lot of, a lot of that is donated to the Community Food Bank- All that information is on our website, which is essexcountyNJ.org, and we look forward to seeing you at those events.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, closed public comment.
I can address that issue.
Thank you.
I wasn't here, so I don't know what she's referring to.
Well, she was.
Yeah, so, and I'm going to ignore that, just, I just don't like the tone of the remarks, but we'll ignore that. But I do want to say that, and you know this, Council President, we've been very active in assuring that the county election board considers moving that, or moving the boundaries so that our Degnan House residents can vote next door.
Right.
It's just that it doesn't make sense for Degnan House residents to have to travel to Edison either walking or driving. So, we're very proactive in addressing that issue, and I hope that, you know, by the next cycle, and the superintendent of elections has looked into that already, and Linda Von Essie has herself written a letter back due to our advocacy and assuring that that's happened. That's been going on for years.
Right.
So, you know, I have nothing to say about the Speaker, but with respect to everyone at Degnan House, just know that hopefully by next cycle, that matter has been addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, to that particular issue, though, the fact that we were at Degnan House this last campaign, I think we still need transportation, even though it's right next door, unless there's some way to get across, think about how the Elks is right, even though it seems it's close proximity, it would still be very difficult for some of the residents to get over there. So, I think we still have to consider that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
But she did have a, Pat Segalas did have a letter from Linda Von Essie.
That's correct.
Addressing that, too. Councilwoman.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, you know, thank, thank Marge, you know, for coming down and giving all the, let us know all the great programming that's done at the library, and to apologize, because it was in my thought to mention the library as well, with the, with the time and effort that the staff there stayed, and again, great to see so many people pitch in. And give a shout out to Anthony. Beautiful day, Sunday morning, the reservation just buzzing, and, you know, with that whole complex there with all the holiday spirit going on, and place was packed, you know, taking a nice walk on a Sunday on a beautiful day, so, nice job to the county. Council President.
Thank you.
I just want to also add on to what my council colleague, Councilwoman Constellino, said about the library staff. I think they went above and beyond, and I hope the library board of directors and director really go with the extra effort and really show their appreciation to the staff. That was above and beyond what they did, and goes to show you what West Orange is all made of. So, thank you for bringing, Marge, you know, I should have walked there, I was not that far away, but I didn't think about it. But, but our thanks to the library, the board of direct, and to the staff. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. I just want to say thank you to Ms. Segalas for, for coming back tonight and, and speaking as she did. Just to perhaps clarify, she was speaking, as she said at the beginning of her remarks, about the incident at the October 30th council meeting, in which she was prevented from continuing to make her remarks during public comment. And I just want to reiterate to my colleagues that I feel it's vitally important, just as vitally as important as Ms. Segalas was saying about the First Amendment, that we need to let our residents and our constituents speak. I'm sure all of us up here, perhaps except for Councilwoman-elect, have felt that we have been individually or as a group been disrespected or even insulted during public comment. I know I have felt that way. But I think it's vitally important for us as elected representatives to hear from our constituents, even when we don't like what they say. And as a corollary, we should try to address whatever issues they raise. That's part of why we have public comment, and that's part of why we have the First Amendment. So, I thank Ms. Segalas for coming in and speaking again, and I hope she continues to come. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, I can respond to that.
Of course.
Councilman, respectfully, there is a line, and the state of New Jersey has codified, as you can read in the, in the agenda, and has codified the ability for a governing body to limit remarks if they're personally offensive. And while that's subjective, you know, I think it's up to the council president or the individual legislator to make the case if they feel that it's personally offensive. So, I, if anybody here respects, you know, the First Amendment right, you know, it's me, right? People to speak, but there's a line, right? There's a line that needs to be drawn, because if not, you know, we would, we would have utter chaos, we would have a lot of problems. And I guess it's, it's in the interpretation of the First Amendment, but while, you know, everyone has a right to say what they feel, there has to be a line drawn, and I think the state of New Jersey protects governing bodies once the discourse takes an offensive or an abusive tone. So, we have to also respect that, because that was put into place for a reason. And I just want to make sure that the public understands that that is not the fact that, you know, I don't want to answer the issue, but I, I feel personally offensive, offended by the remarks that the Speaker made, you know, using remarks like "his people," you know, if you start thinking about, I mean, I don't want to get into too many details, but, you know, unless you sit in these shoes, you don't, you know, sometimes we don't understand what abuse is. I just want to make sure that that's on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. That was actually directed at me, because I did interrupt the comments that were being made, because I will apologize for any interpretation, but it was my interpretation when the Speaker was speaking, that it seemed like, I know I said that we are not here to publicly humiliate anyone, so I did cut off the comments at that time. So, I'm sorry if it was interpreted differently, but that was my understanding at that moment. So, moving on, we do have our mayor here this evening, because we have a resolution on our agenda, Resolution 266-18, which is a resolution authorizing the planning board to undertake a preliminary investigation to determine whether Block 68 qualifies for designation as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment, and Block 68 refers to our public library. So, the mayor's here to give us a little background on this resolution. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. If I can be given a few minutes discretion first.
Absolutely.
First, in regards to the topic tonight, I think it's an important one, and the First Amendment right to free speech. I think we all celebrate that. I don't think any of us would have gotten here if we didn't exercise and believe in that important right. My only condition, I would say, is that just because we have the right to publicly ridicule people, it doesn't mean we should. I think whether we're here or whether we're there, I think we should always exercise a level of decorum that I think better reflects on all of us. So, that said, let me also say, it's my first time being here since the election. I want to thank and congratulate Councilman Cirillo. He should be proud of his eight years of service to this community, and I've said it many times before, but in many ways, Victor, you represent all that is still great with this country. You came here as a young boy, leaving a war-torn country with just your mom to raise you and your sister. You didn't speak the language. You quickly learned English as a teenager. You put yourself through college, earned yourself a master's degree. You were the first Hispanic elected official in this community, and you are running the state's largest housing community. So, I think there's a lot to be proud of. You mentioned earlier in your comments, the Hispanic Foundation, that's clearly a part of your legacy, but you've done a lot for this community. We're proud of you, and proud to call you my friend, and was proud to work with you for eight years.
Okay.
I'd also like to congratulate the council president. I joke with Sue a lot, it just continues to amaze me, all you contribute to this community with a positive spirit, with a positive energy. I joke all the time when we first spoke years ago about you running, you had the enthusiasm of a child, and all these years later, you still do, and your success on Election Day is indicative of the community's respect for you, and I congratulate you and look forward to continuing.
Thank you.
And I'd like to congratulate the councilwoman-elect. We talked earlier briefly in this discussion here about the First Amendment and our right to free speech. We all know, and especially in the social media world we live in, it's easy to have opinions, it's easy to throw them out into the world. It takes, it takes a lot of inner strength to stick your neck out there and put your name on a ballot, and I think you deserve a lot of credit for willing to do that, you deserve a lot of credit for the quality campaign you ran, and you deserve a lot of credit for winning. So, I know I speak for all of us in the administration, that we look forward to working with you. So, back to business.
Okay.
So, there's a resolution on the agenda tonight to consider the library owned by the community as a study for an area in need of redevelopment. So, there's a couple reasons where this comes from, and we'll kind of talk about them separately. We don't have to talk about our COA requirements to understand that we have a real need for affordable senior housing in this community. So, several months ago, we talked with Joe Alpert, for no particular reason other than Joe and his company is, are the redevelopers of the Valley Project. They took 40, 50-year-old abandoned contaminated buildings and proved they can redevelop, and Joe is also an expert, widely considered an expert, in affordable housing. And we asked him to look at the library site and tell us if structurally it can be built up to accommodate affordable senior housing. So, he spent at his own time and his own expense sending professionals there to look at the site, and in fact, determined that you can build five stories of steel construction above the existing library. It's engineered to accommodate that, and that we can fit potentially 75 units of affordable senior citizen housing. So, the town's position on that, the administration's position on that, is that that's, that's huge, because it doesn't have to displace the library, and we can accommodate not necessarily a COA need, but a real practical need the community has for affordable senior housing. Simultaneous to that, we are developing a plan for the executive drive component of the redevelopment up there, and there has been consideration, or at least conversation, in moving the library to that site. Now, that's not a new conversation in this town. If you recall, in the early part of the century, the town spent years trying to incorporate a new library in the Edison redevelopment project. As it turned out, economically, that didn't work, so that was scrapped. In speaking with Dave Cubey, he said the library has records that go back to the 50s of them talking about relocating the library to a different location in town. So, it's not a new conversation. It comes with a lot of side, side issues that have to be addressed. We're not ready to address those issues yet, unless we determine that, in fact, yes, what Joe Alpert's experts have said, that we can build a five-story structure on top of the library. That's the first piece. Whether or not we decide ultimately to move the library to the executive drive site is secondary, because as the engineers and architects who looked at this said, the library doesn't have to be displaced. So, we can keep the library there and still build units, that's great. If we decide that we want to move the library and annex the library, have an annex there while developing the senior and community center that so many people in this administration believes is appropriate, if we can find the space. So, we think there's a lot of upsides to this. David Cubey and the library board has been, you know, kept in the conversation, they've actually visited, David Cubey visited the site that we're, on executive drive that we're looking at as well. So, this is nothing that we're not planning without proper conversations, but we're not to the point where there's anything definitive in this process, as we can all appreciate, until you can take the first step and do this study, we can't come up with the answers to the questions that I'm sure a lot of the council and the members of the public have. So, we believe and have a lot of faith in Joe Alpert and his professionalism and his experience, but we need to study that for ourselves and see if that's viable. We think it's worth the $8,000 we're asking the council to consider, to study that, with the ultimate goal of either the first step in relocating the library, but more importantly, in 75 additional affordable senior citizen units in our community. Any questions?
So, maybe let's just talk about the council on affordable housing. You mentioned the COA, right? So, we have, we are already at max on what was our quota, and now COA really is non-existent.
Council President, that is a great point. Although we think this is, from a practical perspective, really important to the community, we are not going to get COA credits on additional senior units. That doesn't mean.
Doesn't mean.
And you and I have been here the longest, we know that the rules of COA change every four or five years anyway, they've changed a dozen times. So, I don't want to say that we don't care about COA, it's an obligation we have. I think more importantly is the real practical need for senior community housing in this town. So, whether or not we get, we get the COA credit or not, I think is secondary. It'd be nice if we did. We're not going to, but that doesn't mean that we have, we don't have a real need to pursue that and to try to find every available opportunity to create senior housing.
I agree, and we've always complied with whatever standards were in place.
Yes.
At each time. Any questions? Councilwoman.
Mayor, thank you, and, you know, you should get a round of applause, too, for your reelection, and, you know, I think we should, because you work hard. You never stop working. You know, we had a discussion about a year ago when the survey came out, and we discussed this very topic, the need for, you know, we talked about the communication piece, the transportation piece, but in the senior citizen study, there is the piece for affordable housing to stay in the township. So, you heard, you read, you, you done due diligence, and, you know, whichever direction we go, I think we're on the right path, because it's a need, it's a definite need. I know our parents had moved south, and my mom's now, you know, she's still now in Barnegat, and it's outpriced down the shore. So, where residents were leaving the county and going south, they can't even do that any longer, because, well, we don't want them to leave, but that's getting outpriced, and there's traffic down there, and infrastructure, and schools being built, and so on, so forth. You just have to get out of New Jersey these days. But this gives our residents an option, and I look forward to creative conversations to see what we can do. I think it's great, I think, to see what the possibilities are and to explore it is, is healthy for the community, so, thank you for going in this direction. And Joe Alpert, I think, has proven himself, every time he's come here, he's always, you know, he just explains everything so well, he's so professional, just the way he handles himself and his business, I admire, and I look forward to his creativity on the project. And I saw Marge smiling out there, and I know the, and this has also been a topic conversation, many hours spent in the parking lot after a library friends' meeting, talking to Dave Cubey in regards to the needs to grow our library. So, again, just one, one piece with Public Works, how would that fit in with any of this with up at Essex Green yet?
Still too early. We're trying to fit a lot of moving pieces together. I think it's too early. I think getting some clarification on this piece helps us get clarification on the rest, because if, if in fact we can do senior housing here, whether or not we decide to move the library, at least that maybe means on the executive drive piece, the senior component doesn't have to be the priority as it was in some of our preliminary conversations. So, I think we really need to pin down what we can do here before we can finalize, finalize that.
And in the talks, you heard the words "community center," senior, it's for all or senior-oriented, or where are you looking to go there?
So, look, there's been a lot of talk about a senior center. It's never been the administration's position that we didn't support that. It was, as always, it's a matter of cost and location, and those are two things we don't have a lot of in town. So, as a redevelopment project, that makes it viable, that maybe wasn't viable before. So, whether or not, again, this is all hypothetical, but if we were to build the units over this, over the library, maybe we can't make that work. But if we move the library, then we have that existing space for not only for a library annex for this downtown area, for the seniors who would live there, as well as rent a house next door, but it can be then a community center. The nice thing about this, and even a couple steps down the road, this council has approved capital expenditures for library repairs with the promise of a lot more down the road. If we do this, we might not need to spend that money. So, besides having some costs associated with the project coming from a developer, we would But if we move the library, then we have that existing space for not only for a library annex for this downtown area, for the seniors who would live there, as well as rent a house next door, but it can be then a community center. The nice thing about this, and even a couple steps down the road, this council has approved capital expenditures for library repairs with the promise of a lot more down the road. If we do this, we might not need to spend that money. So besides having some costs associated with the project coming from a developer, we would be able to save some of the capital costs we promised the library on the building itself. So there's a lot of things happening. I think a lot of great possibilities, but we need to, we need to answer some of these questions first. So we're asking you to create the study, to do the study, to look at this area as an area in need of redevelopment. It is public property. It's, I don't want to speak forever, but certainly as far, as long as I can remember, it's the first time the administration has ever asked the council to consider an area on publicly owned property, but there's nothing in the law that precludes that. It's actually happening in other towns in New Jersey as we speak. So it's nothing unique about that. It is a little different than what we've done here in the past, but, you know, not unique statewide.
I just want to, if you don't mind, I just want to add to the conversations and just share this with my colleagues, because as you know, working with Patty Duffy on senior services, and even with Bill Keough with the recreation component, you know, we have the Toby Cat Civic Center, which is great, and we hold a lot of activities there. But, you know, we were having conversations about utilizing and maximizing that facility, and it's, we're just so limited there with parking and space and, you know, just being nestled into the backyard of a neighborhood. So, you know, I'm excited to see what we can do looking into these projects. So again, thank you, Mayor, for your creativity. Council President.
So Mayor, do you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask this question about, I feel like I'm already getting into the nitty-gritty. But our next resolution is about authorizing the study to be prepared by Higher Grule. In the conversation with Joe Alpert and even having his team look at that project, parking is so tight here, has he, did he talk about, particularly if there's 75 units, did he talk about parking and how that would be addressed?
I don't want to ever...
I mean, I know there's no plan, and I know there's a study, but...
I'm an expert on the ratio of parking spaces required per unit. However, I do know that it is significantly less for senior citizen housing than it is for an apartment or house or commercial. There's always a lot of different rules. So based on a very preliminary overview, it doesn't appear that we gain any spaces. It doesn't appear that we really meet what we need to, but we certainly wouldn't lose any because, at least according to their review, what we have to confirm in our own study, it doesn't change the footprint of the library. So the existing parking spots that are there would still be available, but we would have to consider that. If it was traditional apartments, that, you know, we would never, never be close to meeting the parking requirements. But senior housing does have a lower threshold for units per parking spaces ratio.
Thank you.
Council President.
Councilwoman.
Thank you for being here again, Mayor. One question, actually two questions. My, what I'm seeing here, that if this did go forward, two things, two things would probably happen. This affordable housing for seniors would actually become tax-ratable for the township. Correct?
Yes, because right now the library is publicly owned, correct.
So now it will be turning a non-taxable parcel of land into generating for tax revenue, which is good.
At least the portion that had the housing, yes.
A portion, right. So that seems very, you know, practical, the fact that it's taking property that now is not generating taxes for the township, would now generate revenues for the township, which is good. The second thing I was thinking about, because everybody's been talking it since I moved here, since my wife was raised here, is that a satellite location. Now, if so, if the library did move to Essex Green and this became totally senior housing in that, the portion that was the library, I just could assume, could be made into a satellite library.
With some sort of public community center, absolutely, yeah. It's not unprecedented. The town, for years, had a satellite library at the community house, so it's not unprecedented.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, so are many pluses to this that offset any possible negatives?
Look, you know, I happen to think there's a lot more positives, but as we all know, not everyone always agrees. But more importantly than that, as we go through the process, I'm sure we'll, we'll come up with some obstacles, and we'll have to either figure out ways to overcome them or we'll go in a different direction. But we're pretty comfortable that this is a viable option. Combined with the Executive Drive redevelopment, it creates a lot of possibilities for the community.
Correct. Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have a question.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, and Mayor, thank you again for the kind words. Really appreciate it. You've always been a good friend, addition to, you know, in my opinion, quality, quality leadership in the township. Wanted to ask, in, as it relates to this proposal, the objective is twofold, right? Addressing the issue of additional senior housing that's needed, right? And number two, and that's a great point, you know, additional funding via pilot revenue to the township, that's instrumental. But real quick, the question is, why do we need, why would, if it's already public property, why do we need to assess it whether it fits the criteria of an area in need of redevelopment?
Because it's the...
Yeah, it's okay.
Sorry, Mr. Trent could weigh in probably from a legal perspective, but simply because if it's not as public property, to sell public property or to look to develop it, you'd have to auction it off to the highest bidder, and we would lose control of the process. So we believe it's more important to first study some of these particulars and then to be able to control the process, as opposed to just putting it out to bid and getting the highest bidder. Mr. Trent could weigh more in on that if you'd like to.
All right, I get it. No, I understand from a development perspective. Yeah, it helps us control the process, and we do have someone, you know, we have a track record in the township.
Well, that's the secondary.
Right.
But the first one is, I think the mayor said, you know, accurately, if you dispose of a public, you see it all the time, because there's lots of times we have all kinds of properties, that we do a process unless it's, as you know, an odd lot or an odd shape. But the Public Buildings Act would require you to just put it on the block, and then you lose total control. So this is the only way you will decide what is going to happen in the future of that site, and who, and then your second point was by whom.
Right, correct.
So, and if, but you articulated correctly inherently, the way you turn this property, other than selling it, you know, again, this may end up being a 99-year lease, you know, where we don't lose control permanently, but there would be a pilot on this, which is a positive. Because right now, as Councilman Marino said, you're collecting zero on that site.
Yeah, that's terrific. And what are the chances, and I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't, I didn't speak, what are the, what are the chances that it would meet the definition of...
We don't have to answer that.
Oh, no, you can't.
I'm still in the nation with...
See, today we're just deciding whether or not we green light.
That's why Higher Grule, the professionals, they know the statute. I'm not gonna, I know Councilman Kocovy actually say, are we calling it blighted? No, we're calling it to the professionals through the planning board, do your job. They'll do their job, they'll come back here if there is a recommendation from the planning board, and then you'll call it.
It's just exciting and progressive, that's all. I didn't mean to get to issues.
That's what the study's for.
And lastly, with respect to the senior component, have we considered also building it at Essex Green, the additional units?
So there's a lot of, I don't want to say conjecture, it sounds like a bad word, but a lot of discussions over what the possibilities are with the landowners. Looking at that parcel, again, it's about 35 acres. This is the Executive Drive piece, not the Essex Green piece, which is already before our zoning board. They've already finalized the plan they want to submit and they want to go with. So we think there's possibilities there, and that was a priority the administration had from the beginning, that if we're going to redevelop some of this property, a senior component would be great. As we kind of looked at that and talked, we thought maybe that site made more sense for the larger library that the library has wanted for years. It is the geographic, keep in mind, Essex Green is the geographic center of town. And then maybe the library site was better for senior housing than the Executive Drive site. So it was really just kind of kicking around a lot of ideas, trying to make it work, and asking some professionals to give some of their time and professionalism to let us know if it's even possible. And in the end, they said from a structural perspective, it is possible. So now we want to take it to the next step and see if we can formalize that. And once we do that, then we can finalize a plan on Executive Drive.
Right.
Just to add two things that, the review of Ten Rooney, which is the structure where potentially...
Use the microphone, please.
You can't hear me?
I'm concerned that people...
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
The review of Ten Rooney, as you know, there's a substantial tenant on the third floor. So it's not a situation where you can potentially have that site, besides the fact that you need the parking for whatever use. So that, that makes that not a plausible location.
And Mayor, one more point, I'm sorry, taking too long. Degnan, the Degnan House has expressed interest in making an investment because they do have some reserves that are available, that have accumulated over time. And as you know, the property's capital needs have been addressed. And I would suggest that, you know, you talk to the board there to see if there's any synergy that can help with the process. As you know, they're a nonprofit board, and the developers will know how to use those vehicles.
That's a great idea, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
He said, he said Degnan, this is Redna, right?
It's the Degnan House.
Yeah, Degnan is, yeah, the other side.
They're operated differently.
Okay, but what we're talking about...
No, Redna is red. They already did the red. They're, they're going to be set for a while.
Right. No, no, but the other reason this makes sense, if you could build a structure similar, is it's a mirror structure. You already have senior housing, so you're in the same, we'll call it, you know, quad or whatever.
Yeah, I would talk to the board, connect with the board.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
There are nursing centers down here, too.
Yes.
If you wanted to talk, that's fine.
No, I just, I just...
No problem, no problem. Mayor, thank you for coming tonight, because it's always helpful to, when you come, and explain where the administration stands on various subjects. It's very useful when you come to the council meeting, because now people can hear a lot about that. So I really appreciate that. Could you just talk a little bit about where things stand up, I guess, up at Essex Green, Executive Drive? Is Executive, I'm sorry, Essex Green, because they filed for, to make their improvements with the planning board, and that's going through the process now, is...
Zoning Board.
I'm sorry, zoning board, I apologize, apologize. Thanks for correcting me. Does that mean that Essex Green is no longer sort of in play for redevelopment? Is there any property there that, that would not be covered by this, that they could come back to later?
The, and Mr. Trent, you can correct me if I say anything inappropriate with a pending hearing before the board, but basically your answer is, it is no longer in play. They've developed the plan, they met with the town, it seemed like a good plan. They didn't want to entertain, candidly, some of the public uses we would have liked to have been part of that property, which is fine, it's their right. So they came up with a plan that makes a major investment on top of the investment they made to purchase the property, and wanted to go before the board, which is their right. It is totally encompassing of the existing footprint of Essex Green. What some people might not know is they own another five acres along Rooney Circle, right across from the ShopRite, the area that gets all muddy and dirty, and sometimes trucks are parked in with a pile of snow there. That is a large enough parcel of land to build on. They have indicated that they want to keep that open for possibly building on it someday. But it's not part of this plan, they have no immediate plans to do that. That's the only other land they own that is not part of what is before the zoning board currently.
So just to fine tune that, yes, Essex Green is still part of that redevelopment zone, and certainly the discretion that I'm aware of is, Higher Grule has been told, as we know, you approved the plan for 300, which is in the midst of being implemented, as far as I know. And they've been directed to complete now the plan to propose to the planning board, and then it comes here as soon as possible. So what they will put, as you know, it's an overlay zone. So what they will propose or suggest with regard to Essex Green, presumably it may or may not be consistent, I have no idea, with what's being proposed to the zoning board, but they're on different tracks. But at some point, they may or may not merge, it doesn't matter. The zoning board has a criteria they have to evaluate. The planning board is doing a more macro plan that will include the balance of Executive Drive and, as I understand it, Essex Green. So that's before the planning board. So Higher Grule was told, complete the plan to get the rest of that approved redevelopment area through the plan process.
But we're not there yet.
But I would think you really can't do that if, if you're juggling all these ideas about the Public Works facility, and then the animal control, now you're talking about senior housing, maybe a library.
These are different, yes, you can.
Different properties.
I'm sorry. It's specifically why you have redevelopment, so you can do it, as you know, in a more macro basis. So they're not inconsistent, and the goal is to bring everything together and to the public and to you, as the people load on it, so that everything kind of fits together like puzzle pieces. So, so again, that's why, especially now, that, you know, especially now, and especially with the possibility of the library coming play, they're different. They're not even going to move on the same calendar, but we want them all, as you saw in this resolution and the proposal, I said to Higher Grule, come back with whether that area meets the requirements of the statute by the end of the year. Let's get that done, figure that out. And then meanwhile, obviously, there's significant discussions going on that will go to, through the planning, the plan process with the owners of Executive Drive. And again, to the extent that Clarion plays a part of that, who knows? They're focused before the board, so that's what they'll do. But again, going to the mayor's point, if you have four-plus acres on the westerly border that's part of Executive, Essex Green, then the town has an opportunity now to say, well, here's what the future development may or may not be. Doesn't mean that they don't have, they can't go before the zoning board, say, well, we don't like that overlay, and we don't like the existing zone, we want to do X or Y or Z. And then the zoning board has that jurisdiction.
Right. What I was actually asking about was Executive Drive. We've, the council majority did approve the redevelopment plan for 300 Executive Drive.
Right.
So that's...
So 300 is, for those in the public who might not know, is the newer building of that complex. It was always the building in the best condition. It was always in the building that had the most occupancy. So regardless of what is going to be proposed for that property, everyone was in agreement, the owners as well as the township, that that 300 Executive Drive was going to remain an office building. So they simply wanted to get going and start rehabbing that building to get tenants in there and maximize the potential for that building. So although a lot is happening around that, everyone was in agreement that regardless of what the plan looks like, 300 was going to remain an office building. They just wanted to bring it up to modern standards and maximize their ability to fill it with proper tenants and maximize its economic potential.
No, I understand that. What about the whole rest of the property?
Still, we're still looking at a lot of those things. Again, it's no secret, we have a goal, but we also have a need to relocate Public Works. So we know that a relocated Public Works can be a lot smaller than the existing Public Works, because the existing Public Works building was built at a time where we had twice the number of Public Works employees, if not even more than that. So we don't need as much room on a new Public Works site as we have in the old one, but we still need to move Public Works as part of redevelopment. And keep in mind, that is funded by, by the redevelopment project, so we have, I don't want to say money to play with, but we have money to play with to do that. So we need to, we need to piece that in there. We think the Ten Rooney location, which is kind of cornered up against 280, doesn't really negatively impact that project if there was some Public Works component there. There's also a couple of other sites in town we're looking at as potential Public Works sites as well, even if it's not the single site, that maybe we have a couple sites, where we do have some storage requirements, where, and we also have some more active day-to-day Public Works operations. Maybe we can have multiple sites where one was more just storage and one was more of the active responsibilities by the men. So there's a bunch of things happening there. Again, we're thinking about, maybe this is a site for a library. As Rich mentioned, Mr. Trent mentioned, Ten Rooney Circle does have a tenant that's leased for the next five years, which we don't see as a bad thing, because they're a good tenant, a quiet tenant, and could provide income to this project if that's the direction we go. We need to relocate, and in speaking with a lot of the members of the community who operate the animal shelter, we need not only an animal shelter location, but we need a bigger one that provides a better room, you know, for the need. So we think that's a great opportunity to fit that in there as well. It's, it's an amenity that I will say I've been surprised with the overwhelming support from the public, but we'd like to put a dog park there, and we think there's land to put a dog park there. So a lot of things we'd like to do, we're just trying to make all these pieces fit. But before we can really finalize what works, and ultimately what works economically for the owners, we don't own the property, and they have a right to make sure these projects can, can make money for themselves with whatever they're going to contribute in terms of land to the town. So there's a lot of things happening, but we don't think we can get there until we really figure out if the hope of putting senior housing on the library site can be achieved or not. That really is going to trigger a lot more of the plan. So that's, this is kind of the first step.
So there's, from what you're saying, it sounds like there's no agreement at this point between the administration and Executive Drive about anything that's going to be placed there?
Other than 300 remaining office space, no.[1767.66]
Do you have a time horizon?
Well, Mr. Trank mentioned and we, I don't want to say we pushed Higher Grule, but we, you said we don't want it as a six-month study. Get the study back by the end of the year so we can either know the answer's yes or the answer's no in the early part of 2019 so we can move on this quickly.
So just, just to clarify for me, you've probably been clear to everybody else. You've asked Mr. Albert, Alpert, to have his professionals and they have given the professional opinion that, that we can put a five-story steel structure over the library. So...
They say that structurally, that can be built, yes, over the existing library without changing the library.
Okay. So has the administration decided that that's the way to go?
No, no, no. This is, the administration recommends to the council that you send this to have a study analyzing it and then we'll evaluate it piece by piece. We're not gonna get in a situation where any member of the public or any member of this council thinks that anything is a preordained because under our form of government, at the end, this council will make a determination as a redevelopment agent area. So, so the bottom line is, it's gotta go have this study done. There's, there are options. The mayor has been as transparent as possible that these are all options. And, and again, nothing has been determined on any level and this is just the very first step for, if you agree that this should be studied, to send it to have a study done at a cost of $8,000, period.
And we might find out the answer's no. But, but then we can sit down and finalize a plan for Executive Drive, knowing that this is not an option.
Right. But it, but it does sound like you've decided to do this from an administration perspective if the council approves it.
No, no, but please don't answer that. I can't.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get clarity.
You're saying nobody's decided anything. You're the person who's deciding. You're the council.
We've agreed to do the study. Yeah, we've agreed to do the study, absolutely.
And, and Mr. Alpert's name, you know, has, has come up on this. Is this something that the administration is pretty much set on that it's gonna be Mr. Alpert?
No, absolutely not. No, we just, and I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna apologize for this. Joe has turned properties that everyone else in the state wrote off as dead and buried and has turned them into viable, affordable housing in an area town that needs a development. It's gonna hopefully spring a lot of redevelopment on the Highland Station. So that, that, that creates a lot of credibility in my eyes, but besides that, outside of what he's done for the town, he is widely considered an expert in affordable housing and this type of construction. He does not clear fields and build new housing on cornfields. He redevelops properties just like this and he did it completely as a courtesy, that he had his people look at this to say, yeah, this could be done. So we think, at least based on that expert opinion, that this is worth pursuing and the first step in this is the study.
Okay. But, but from an administration's perspective, you haven't decided that Mr. Alpert is who you would like to support to do the project?
No, and ultimately that would be a council decision with, with administrative recommendation anyway. So that we're way ahead of that. We're way, way before that step.
Okay. Getting back to Executive Drive, I just want to confirm, just because there's so much you're talking about, substantial expense there, is, is part of the equation for this would be to provide a pilot to the owners of Executive Drive?
I, I think it's still too early, but, but I've tried to be clear even in what was a contentious meeting at the high school. There's two reasons for a pilot under the law. One, to encourage investment that might not otherwise be made without the pilot. And secondly is if there's a substantial public purpose. If we can create a substantial public purpose, the administration, if the economics made sense and there was a substantial public purpose, the administration would be comfortable asking the council to approve that. But again, that, as in all things, it's ultimately a council decision.
And just to, as you are aware, there is absolutely no application nor ability as a result of what Clarion's doing to go for the zoning board, for them to get a pilot on Essex Green. With regard to Executive Drive, yes, the owners of Executive Drive and specifically 300, because they have gotten your approval, have filed what's called, I think it just came in yesterday. I haven't even reviewed it. I'll get it to you immediately. What they call it is a placeholder, where they say, when and if we get there, yes, we're gonna ask the town, and the town hasn't evaluated yet or approved anything, it'll come before you, to consider a payment in lieu of taxes. So that is, that is definitely with regard to Executive Drive, what their request is, not what any commitment has been on any level. We have a financial consultant, Mr. Hanley, who's been before you innumerable times. He will have to analyze it, explain the economics and you will have to, the council will have to approve it.
So, yes, would you please send that along to the council? We would appreciate it.
That's just part and parcel, the fact that it's an area needed redevelopment.
Absolutely. Well, it's, comes way down the line, but it does come before there's any approval of a plan.
Right.
Well, it's not, I don't know if this is semantics. It's not really part and parcel. It's a totally separate law that is only enabled.
But it can't be obtained, but, and you've argued this a zillion times. And yes, everybody understands that without an area needing redevelopment, you can't have a pilot. Yes, that's for sure. And that goes back to the point that Councilman Guarino and Councilman Cerrill were making. We, without studying and without there being some analysis as the library property, right now it's zero.
But just for public clarification, it doesn't mean an area in redevelopment automatically is a pilot.
Right, exactly.
So to Mr. Trank's point, Essex Green is moving forward. They didn't ask for a pilot. They don't want a pilot. There's no pilot. They're, they're investing in their property with no promise of a pilot and no application for one.
That was the point I was making. Thank you.
Just want to ask, have you, have you done any sort of, of consideration of what all of this might be costing and where the money would come from?
So we do have money. Contractual obligation Prism has to fund us not only for the property, Public Works, but for relocation costs. Mr. Gross can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's in excess of $9 million. So doesn't go as far as it used to, but it's still enough money for us to do some of what we're talking about with relocating Public Works either to one or multiple sites. So we don't think that's a cost. If in fact, all the stars align and we can build senior housing on the library site, there would be some cash that would come to the town for the property and we would certainly expect that that would cover any relocation and fit-out costs for the library or for the library to stay, that that would cover any costs that we might incur as a result of that. So there's still too many things moving, but we think we can do a lot of this, if not all of it, without any public funding. That's the hope.
And when you say public funding, you'd...
We're not gonna come to the council and request any funding.
Right. But I mean, a pilot would basically be forward-looking public funding because they get, you know, a big tax break.
As long as there's a public component. That's part of the equation, absolutely. And, and let's go back.
I don't think I would concede for a second that they get a tax break. They get stabilized.
They get stabilized taxes. And that would certainly be part of the library site because if we wanted to make, in fact, senior housing affordable, you know, a pilot would help guarantee their affordability for, for 30 years. So, so there's an economic advantage in that perspective. And in Executive Drive, like I mentioned earlier, unless there's a substantial public benefit, the administration's not gonna ask the council to even consider a pilot anyway. And everyone, as part of this process, that has been made clear to, from the onset. The town either gets a lot of stuff or you're on your own.
So I certainly understand the strategy behind, trying to see if, if the library property qualifies for, under the redevelopment law, because as Mr. Trank pointed out, it gives us a much, much more control. But what we've got there right now is basically a fully functioning library. Everything looks nice. Everything works. I know we've got some capital programs, you know, that, that need to be funded and, and actually executed, but how, how is it that that property could, could qualify for redevelopment?
Again, neither, the, the mayor has lots of qualities, but he's not going to interpret the law tonight for you and he's not gonna serve the purpose of a certified planner who's done this in innumerable towns. So again, Higher Grule...
And for the town.
I'm sorry. And for, I saw.
Higher Grule has worked for the town long before any of us were here. You know, worked for the town in the 90s in the original redevelopment plan. So great, you know, relationship that we have with the town as well. Knows the town well. So to Rich's point, very professional, renowned around the state. We're comfortable that they'll do a good job in getting us the answer we need, yes or no.
Well, that just brings up an issue. I had asked for sort of their direct bona fides for where they had done either redevelopment studies or redevelopment plans on municipal libraries.
Well, I'm not sure that a municipal library is any different than any other property in, 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 there's nothing in the statute, as you know, that says municipal properties or libraries are any different than any other structure. So they did provide me and I'll be glad to circulate, but as you know, they've done hundreds of redevelopment studies in New Jersey and the statute, again, as you're well aware, does not differentiate between libraries or public properties. It's gonna meet the criteria and that's their job without any direction, one way or the other. Just call it one way or the other so the planning board can then consider it and then ultimately the township council can consider it.
They may be the most experienced redevelopment, uh, planning firm, planning firm in the state or, or even larger. I mean, they, they were, they were the first in so many places. They've, they've done so much of the planning involved in the initial stages and litigation, town after town after town. There's no question that they have qualifications to do this or any other work.
Did you just say litigation? We don't want litigation.
No, no, no. No, they were, the point is being involved in the early litigations when everything was questioned and successfully defending the cases.
Okay. So, so has Higher Grule done, do we know whether they've done redevelopment studies on libraries, municipal libraries?
I, I don't know that they have or haven't. I know that I got a full list of all their towns. Obviously, Mr. Gross is aware of them because they did South Orange. They've done Harrison, Ridgefield. They've done numerous, public-private, but again, I don't know. I know that with regard to libraries, there's definitely been some redevelopment reviews with regard to Scottish Plains and is it Berkeley Heights?
Berkeley Heights.
Is that Berkeley Heights? But again, it, there's nothing that, it's gonna meet the criteria. So that is up for them to determine and the planning board and you to ultimately agree or disagree.
I know we have two separate resolutions on the agenda, 266 and 267. I had a question about 267. Should, should I ask it now?
Sure, absolutely.
Because we probably, the rest of the council. One of the things, I've, I've raised this issue before, is that from what I can see on the, in the redevelopment law, it gives the planning board the power to conduct the investigation. But what we have here tonight is that the administration is asking the council to approve the planner to conduct the investigation and, correct me if I'm wrong, but the planning board has not considered this project at all, let alone who they're going to have as the planner. And the law, I think is pretty clear, you know, it says, "A municipal planning board shall have the power to conduct, when authorized by the municipal governing body, a preliminary investigation", blah, blah, blah. But it looks like we're telling them who to use for their preliminary investigation.
The answer is that, again, nobody's telling anybody what to use. What you're doing is authorizing and directing there be a preliminary investigation. In the past, the planning board chairperson has indicated that they feel, and I think it was comments by members of public or probably you among them, let's have, not have Mr. Greigle's firm do it. You could, and again, that would be certainly the most, I'm always looking at how to save the money. But there was a sentiment said, have a separate one planned and certainly Higher Grule, as Mr. Gross and everybody can see in the state of New Jersey, is among the best and among the most experienced. So the bottom line is, it all comes down to cost and speed. Higher Grule has immense experience. There's certainly nothing in the words you read. You control the purse strings. So at the end of the day, if we don't allocate the money and we go down this process, it, it should not matter which planner is picked at the end of the day. It's a question of picking a competent planner who can do it in a reasonable timeframe so that we can get to an answer. Because as the mayor said, in a way, it's the piece of the puzzle. And if this piece comes to play, it probably does have an impact, as I think the mayor is saying, on what the plan will look like on Executive Drive. If it doesn't come to play, it'll, it'll create other impacts, which are fine. But there's certainly nothing in the law that says this council, the opposite. The council controls the purse strings and certainly the concept of one planner versus another does not have any impact. And this council has always in the past chosen and directed that X, Y, Z firm. And certainly the planning board has never had any issue negative with regard to this firm. There was an issue years ago, you recall, that the planner who was chosen to do the area, I'll call it from Chit Chat down to Mayfair Farm, people weren't happy with that firm that was selected. So therefore, the, the administration, the mayor said, hey, let's not go with someone, you know, this is not a process to just have, waste money. Let's go with the most experienced people possible.
Yes, I, I understand that and, and I can appreciate that. What I'm saying is, my reading of the law, there's another section. Section 6 says, "The governing body of the municipality shall assign the conduct of the investigation and hearing to the planning board of the municipality." It sounds like we, the council, are being asked to assign the planner to the planning board. And that, my reading of the, of the laws seems to indicate that that's something that they should be doing.
Councilman, there are many, many towns where the planners, you know, we once had a full-time planner on staff and the township picks that and that person doesn't work for the planning for all the boards. That's no different than, than picking a consultant planner for work in the township and studying. Every municipality I've been involved with, I've had in redevelopment and these types of matters. The, the town, the governing body has made the selection of who the professionals are gonna be to, to work on these types of projects.
I, I don't disagree with anything that you're saying. I'm just saying, this is what the law says and, and, and you're saying that it's okay to, what looks like to me, to go against what the law is saying.
No, you said the law says we assign the investigation to the planning board. It doesn't say we don't give them the tools to do it. We're giving them the tools to do it if you choose to. If you want to vote against that resolution or any resolution, do it. It's fine. You don't have to support it. But by, by, I think your theory is, you say to them, do the investigation and then they start interviewing professionals and then they have to come back here in a month and say, they solicit the proposals. It's never happened before in the, in the 20-plus years I've been down attorney. But yeah, if you want to do it that way, if that's the way the council votes and says, we vote down that resolution, then it'll just stall out for probably 60, 90, 120 days and we'll see what happens. You know, again, you don't have to do it. But there's certainly nothing improper or illegal about it. That's the bottom line. We're gonna follow the law. If you want to, as a public policy, go in a different direction, you have every right to vote against every resolution.
Which brings up an issue. Is there some reason behind the sense of urgency of trying to get this done really quickly?
Well, I think a couple of reasons. First of all, we've been talking about this project for a while. It's not the priority, but the property owners, again, are a little anxious. But besides that, we've been talking about this process for a while. We kind of came about this component, I don't want to say accidentally, but it was just among an informal conversation. So before we can get to the Executive Drive to finalize that, we need to know this. So I don't want to say urgency, but no one likes things taking years as, as it is and we don't see the reason to wait. To get to Executive Drive, we need the answer to this piece first. So is there urgency in that regard? Yeah, because we want to get a plan done and we can't now until we know the answers to this. But, but I think from a general perspective, you know, one thing, I don't think in all my years in government, everyone's, anyone's ever complained that government works too fast. So...
Not here.
So I just think it's, we even talked about this, it's time to finalize a plan and move forward, if it's viable and if the council ultimately and the planning board approves.
And one of the points the council made when we came in with 300 is, don't do it piecemeal. Do it macro. Now we're doing it macro and now you're saying do it piecemeal or go the other way. So the bottom line is, it's time. We have a redevelopment area on Executive Drive. Yes, you know, there is a substantial public purpose that when the mayor had his meeting in the libraries, I want a substantial public purpose and the owner is saying, we want to do that. So how do we do it? The mayor says, we need senior housing. That site doesn't look like it works. It does not work, especially with the TSA and the structure of that building. So this might, maybe, if it qualifies, allow that issue to be addressed along with the library, along with the dog park, along with Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. You've been very helpful. I really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mayor, thank you very much. Wow. Can we take a voice vote on these two? Go out of order now? The mayor's here.
Are they being polled?
Go to the agenda. We didn't even do the consent. Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting and executive session November 13th, 2018. Consent. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills. Are there any questions on the bills? Consent. Resolutions. Are any resolutions being called this evening?
There are none. Colleagues?
I would like to ask a question about one of the proposed resolutions. Agenda item D, Resolution 262-18, resolution authorizing the township to retain CME associates to research and prepare a traffic study as part of the ongoing litigation involving West Essex Highlands and its challenge to the township's affordable housing plan. I don't feel qualified to speak publicly, but Mr. Trank, who is much more knowledgeable about the law and has been attending all of these mediation meetings... about the law and has been attending all of these mediation meetings, would know whether, what he could say to perhaps explain to people where things stand with that litigation.
Okay, sure.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Tranque.
So this deals with the affordable housing litigation and the affordable housing requirements that this town will and can comply with to the extent of the law. So Council President McCartney has been involved in the mediation sessions, and Councilmen Kukoviac have been involved in all the mediation sessions. The condo board from the Highlands has been involved with their council, and obviously Mr. Sares, Mr. Gross, and various members, including Mr. Greigle and Mr. Lepore. So the bottom line is, the mediation, I guess the fair way to say it, to sum it up, is the mediation is ongoing. And it has, and obviously, the main person, the really only person we've mediated with so far, has been the owners of the acreage directly contiguous to the Highlands. So that's why we've wanted to have them involved. And obviously, this goes back to what is going to, as Council President McCartney said, this township has complied with all of the requirements in terms of getting affordable housing, credits and approvals and whatnot, and obviously, the litigation that goes back probably 40, 50 years, Mount Laurel litigation continues. So where we got to, as we, as probably most of the township knows, certainly Councilman Kukoviac, and the administration and the entire council is aware of, is that they have made a request for a certain number of units, and certainly, there is, there would be a significant impact for the number of those units, besides the location, as we all know, is not particularly conducive to mass transportation, and is, would be significantly congested. So there's a mediator who was appointed by the court, and the bottom line is, the concept was, do a traffic study. They did a traffic study, where they said it could hold a certain number of units. We hired CME, and I know that both council persons who have been involved in mediation were very impressed by their presentation, and they raised a number of issues. And so now, the traffic consultant for West Essex Highlands, meaning the property owner, has come back and responded. And so the only way to do a full analysis of that is by this proposal before you, to allow them, because one of the points that the township, including the council members involved, have been adamant about is, you can't just look at how to get in or out of that site. But you've got to look at what's the impact, obviously, all the way down to Pleasant Valley Way, and obviously, on Laurel Avenue. Obviously, there will be a traffic signal, that's always embedded in everything, on Oval Road, we all know where that is, on Eagle Rock and Oval Road, but that's not the end of it, because of course, traffic will back up, there's already traffic issues in this area. So that's what this is about, is basically to continue to act in good faith in the mediation, but to be as analytical as possible, as to what the impact will be if, if there is a significant project developed on the West Essex Highlands site. So I don't know, it gave a flavor, I can't, there's nothing decided. The judge, though, is starting to push us, who, he is the judge presiding over every town in Essex County, and he is, and some towns are starting to settle, and so we have, like, we have three kind of prongs to this. We have the West Essex Highlands owners, who, as this town knows, we've been in certain litigation with them for probably 20 to 30 years. And now we have the owners of what I call the Turco site, I don't know what that is actually called, but it's basically the site behind the Marriott facility on Pleasant Valley Way. And then, of course, we have Fair Chair Housing, which is the nonprofit that is advocating for additional affordable housing throughout New Jersey, and has been, you know, significantly aggressive in their pursuit. So, as you know, this township approved $3 million from our developers' fees that's being built as we speak, and that will be a tremendous, the court did approve that, and that'll be a tremendous feather in everyone's cap, because that'll be on Central Avenue, and that'll be 55 Affordables, 45 Market. And that is the project that the mayor said, that Mr. Albert is currently bringing out of the ground as we speak, and, you know, will be significant.
Thank you.
Makes sense. Yes?
Are any resolutions being called this evening?
Besides that question, any resolution?
Yeah, I do have some, some issues with 266, 267. 266, I just don't think, my reading of the redevelopment law means that that property's going to be qualified, but I hesitate to say my decision rules, so I'm feeling like, maybe I'll just go ahead and add that on consent agenda, but I do want to pull 267 just so, because I don't think we're following the law on that. So I'd like to pull 267, but not 266.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others?
Anyone else?
No, but I just got to make a comment. We have our attorneys here, and you make a comment that you don't think we're following the law. And that is just, that, I have to be honest, Councilman, that disturbs me, because you imply that we're doing something inappropriate. And our attorneys are here advising us, and then it gets out there on Facebook and everywhere else, and it's just disheartening at this point. We're trying to, you know, you talk about, and I thought, and I appreciate your conversation with the mayor, you had a very lengthy conversation, I'm glad the mayor was here to discuss everything, but just to make these comments, as we're doing something inappropriate all the time, is really wearing on me lately. And Mr. Tranque, you just revisit again with, you know, Resolution 267, that we are not, you know, we are in our legal rights to have this resolution here this evening, and to vote upon it. And great, if you don't feel comfortable with that, I appreciate that, but I don't appreciate the comments to the public constantly that we're doing things inappropriately here, because that is so far from the truth. Mr. Tranque?
Yeah, so absolutely, the bottom line is, there is no statute, law, or case, and we evaluated them all, because we were going through this on Essex Green and Executive Drive, that says, "You control the budget." So you can control the retention of any professionals, and there is nothing in the statute that was referenced, or in any other law, and I welcome always if someone points to a specific statute where it says that you, the Planning Board has no budget, they have no professional budget that they can, they get $35 million for their attorney, or whatever that number is. But the way in which this works is that you control the purse strings. So if you won't give them the revenues, and there's absolutely nothing that says that you can't say, "It should be XYZ versus Joe Smith or Sally Smith." You know, the key is to go with competent professionals, and I can assure you, and you can call up Hired Grill tomorrow if you want, and talk to them, that there's under no certainty they've been told how or what to do. They've been told, "Do this study, and give us a proposal to do this study." And if it's approved tonight, they will do the study. No one's seen the draft, they haven't, I have no idea. I assume they look on Google Earth when they get an assignment, just like most of us, but it would be insulting to suggest that any professional of that caliber, that they have even discussed with us under what subsection it may or may not come. The only person who asked that was tonight, when you asked it. But certainly to go to your question, Councilwoman, there is absolutely nothing that violates or deviates from any law, or statute, or precedent, that would not allow you to adopt the resolution proposed, which merely says that, that Hired Grill is being asked to do this study on the library site, and to bring that study in 30 days, at a cost not to exceed $8,000, period.
So I have not in any way suggested anything untoward about the selection of Hired Grill. All I've said is, this is, and I'll just read to you what the, what the law says. Section 4B says, "A municipal planning board shall have the power to conduct, when authorized by the municipal governing body, a preliminary investigation and hearing, and make a recommendation." Section 6 says, "The governing body of a municipality shall assign the conduct of the investigation and hearing to the Planning Board of the municipality." That doesn't sound like to me that we can tell them exactly who to take as their planner. And that's, and that's what the resolution says. So that's, I'm not suggesting anything untoward, I'm just saying, I can read the law, and this, and this doesn't sound like what we're doing.
What I only see in, about your interpretation, which is, again, if you have a case that even references the way you're trying to interpret, you're assigning them to, the Planning Board, to do their function. You're not telling them what to do or how to do. You're saying, "All we want to do is study the area." The fact that you're giving them the tools in the same resolution, by the way, as you're well aware, in one of the earlier redevelopments, we not only allocated the money upfront, which was totally permissible for them to do the study, but also, once the study was done, to do the plan that they wanted. We then changed our mind, said, "Well, we'll do it with a different planner." But you're allowed to do all of that. None of that was ever challenged in litigation, or anywhere in the state, or is improper and permissible. But you could go the other way. By the way, I'm not disagreeing. If you wanted to say, "We'll assign it to them, and we'll let them interview, you know, planners, and come back and try to get something cheaper than $8,000, and try to get somebody better than Hired Grill," you have every right. But it's not, I think the question that's being asked, is it illegal? And I think that Councilwoman Castellino is correct. It is wrong to say it is illegal to do it the way you are, because nobody, certainly not the professionals you have, who've been your professionals for 20 years, are going to let you do anything illegal tonight. So that's not, it's not illegal. You could go a different way. You could say, "I just feel it's better to give them more discretion, to let them pick their own horse." You could do that, but it's not illegal. That's the point that is being clarified.
But even if you did, and they still have to, they still have to come back to this governing body, and this governing body would say yes or no to what their recommendation is, because it's your decision, not theirs. They do not have, they don't have the legal ability to procure anything. They cannot spend one dime unless the council approves it.
Would only be a recommendation.
So if you don't think there's anything wrong with picking the horse, Councilman Kukoviac, then I don't understand what the point is at all. I thought your point was, it seemed like we're preordaining because we're picking Hired Grill, but if you say, "Oh, they're just as good as anybody else," and they certainly are, at least as good as everybody else, then I'm not sure what the objection is at all. Then it's a question of, is it legal to do what you're doing or not? And clearly, the answer is, it is legal to do what you're doing. You could choose, as a matter of fact, I don't want to tell, you know, autonomous bodies what to do, but they don't have any money, as Mr. Gross said, and they'll have to come back here eventually at some point.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Resolution 267-18, resolution authorizing the township to retain Hired Grill and associates at a rate not to exceed $8,000 to prepare a study as to whether the property at 46 Mount Pleasant Avenue, the public library qualifies as an area in need of redevelopment. Councilman Kukoviac.
I think we've drained this, this cup, I think we should just, I'll make the motion to, to vote unless anybody else has anything else to say.
Okay, is there?
Second.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
No.
Council President McCartney. Ordinances on second and final reading, 2556-18, bond ordinance providing for the local unit's allocable share of capital improvement projects for the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties. Buy-in in the township of West Orange appropriating $1,570,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,570,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney.
Yes. Any questions, any comments on this?
Maybe Councilman should remind the public.
We talked about this on first reading also.
If you just want me to go, if I may?
It's spelled out in the resolution.
Just anybody who needs to know, this...
You really, really should have the public, public hearing first, and open and close it, and then...
Sorry.
Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Council President, my colleagues. Just for the general public's knowledge to know, this is part of our share of the joint meeting proposal to build with FEMA money to make the treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, as stormproof as possible. What it is, it's not only including facilities, and new pumping, and electrical, but also to build the storm walls, to prevent water coming over from the Raritan River into the facility and inundating it. We had a tremendous presentation done here a few months back by CME, that gave the council colleagues and the public knowledge of what's going to happen with this project, our share of the project from the other communities that belong to the joint meeting, and what FEMA intends to pay. Now, just going forward, if FEMA does not commit to what we've agreed to, then of course, this isn't going forward. But we believe, and the Board of Directors of the joint meeting believe, that FEMA will come through on their portion for this project, and this will be our share to maintain it. If we don't do this, and if the 10 other members of the joint meeting do not do this construction project, the next time you have another superstorm, you're looking at $10 billion worth of damage and rebuilding costs. So for the small amount of money it's costing us now, this will prevent any further damage, or any new damage that may occur if we get another superstorm sanding. Because as it was stressed in the presentation, if this facility goes out, it will go out for 18 months, and I don't think residents want to handle their own sewage for 18 months. So that's why this ordinance is being done, and that's why we're being asked for our share of a million five. Thank you, council colleagues.
And just to be clear, this is the first tranche of that. When FEMA does buy into the rest of the project, there will be additional funding that will be required, but we should get most of that back.
And most of it will come back. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you.
Thank you, council colleagues.
Is there a motion?
To approve on second and final reading, 2556-18?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, 2557, an ordinance to vacate, release, and extinguish the public right to a portion of Elmwood Avenue in the township of West Orange, from Roosevelt Avenue to Garfield Avenue. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some move. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Pending matters, new matters?
I just wanted to just mention, just to mention about this, ordinance to vacate this property. This is an interesting parcel at the westwardly edge of Roosevelt Avenue. It is 50 feet wide, it is a paper street, but it could technically be developed, that would end up behind Garfield Avenue and Roosevelt Avenue. And what the engineer is suggesting in this ordinance is that we vacate this, it will go back to the property owners, so nothing is developed, if you think of Mount Vernon Avenue and Elmwood Avenue across from there. So this is vacating that property, and the parcels go to the owners adjacent to the property, so that no development would occur. Thank you.
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion? I have a pending matter.
I do also. Yes, Madam Clerk, tell us your pending matter.
Okay, so December 11th meeting, we're going to do the nomination of the council president for the 2019 term, and also council liaison appointments. So I made a copy of the first page of the agenda, create a draft for everyone to review, because the council liaison appointments have the person who's serving currently, the initials next to the board itself. So you can think about what you want to do.
Thank you.
You don't have to think about it. And what do you need to know by?
Thank you, yeah.
Next meeting, okay. Yes, so you can think it through, and... Talk to each other. Exactly.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So my pending matters is just to remind the public that according to our town ordinance and the DEP regulations about our leaf collection, that if you're seeing these leaves, they can put the leaves out at the street, they shall not be placed along curb and gutter more than seven days prior to what your zone is scheduled for, that you can check online. But just to remind everyone, that leaves may not be placed within 10 feet of any drainage inlet, particularly with the snow and rain that we've had, causing any type of water damage. So just a reminder, that if you're putting your leaves in the curb for town pickup, please stay 10 feet away from any stormwater drain. Thank you. Public service announcement, not pending matters.
Okay. Are there any other...
We can adjourn, and this evening, we'll adjourn as council, and we are going to reconvene as the ABC board. Good night, everyone. Please, council@westorange.org if you have any questions.
Can I have a motion to adjourn and go into ABC?
Motion to, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.